This is Lisa McDonald, trustee McDonald, and I'm here to call the Willmet Public Library Board of Trustees virtual meeting to order for July 21st at 6:01 PM. May we have a roll call, please, trustee.
Trustee Barshis, yes. Trustee Fishman?
Yes, A. here.
Trustee Johnson?
Here.
Trustee Riddle. Trustee Rogers?
Here.
Trustee Wolf?
Here.
And trustee McDonald?
Here.
And trustee Riddle, Anya, no. Okay.
Okay. Anthony, do you want to take the roll call of those who are visiting us today?
Sure, I see that we have two representatives from the League of Women Voters. I see Georgia Gethardt and Mary Lawler, thank you for being with us. And I also see three staff members. I see Gail Justman, Marty Bell Fontaine, and John Risco.
Thank you.
And myself.
Good to acknowledge. Okay. Right now, this is a session where we have public comment. Does anyone have anything that they would like to comment that's who are visiting us today? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on. You have got the draft of the June 23rd minutes. May we have a motion to adopt the amendment?
I motion we adopt the June 2020 minutes.
I will second.
Okay. Trustee Wolf has moved that we adopt the June 23rd minutes and trustee Barshis has seconded it. Any discussion regarding the meeting minutes? Can we have a roll call?
Trustee Barshis, yes. Trustee Fishman?
Yes.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Riddle? Absent. Trustee Rogers?
Yes.
Trustee Wolf?
Aye.
And trustee McDonald?
Aye.
Given that there are no presentations, let's move with trustee Rogers to the treasures report.
Okay, you have the notes on financial reports in your materials for the meeting. During the month of June, we received a little over $50,000 under the Kennelworth contract, $10,000 in fund, general fund interest, and about $11,000 in grants. Our end-of-year expenses as of June 30th were at 91% of budget. There may be some additional expenses that come in for the past fiscal year, but I think that's probably in the process of being closed up. Our major expenses during the month were for insurance and materials. And so, there's nothing extraordinary in this financial report. It's pretty much what we expected it to be. The only action that we need to take is approval of the June bills and salaries. I so move.
I will second.
You're muted, Lisa.
Thank you. Trustee Rogers has moved for the approval of the bills and salaries for the month of June 2020, and trustee Wolf has seconded it. May we have, is there any question? Or discussion? Okay, it's been.
I had a question about the general report, but I can wait till after the motion if you'd like.
Oh, the motion's been done. So, do you have any regarding the June report?
I just want to, my question was, is, does Anthony or anyone else expect us to spend more than 91% of budget, or do we expect we'll have, you know, the equivalent of a 9% surplus?
I think we've got all of our expenses in for the year.
Okay, so, so we spent just around 91% of what we budgeted?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
Been moved and seconded, is, can we now have a vote for the approval of the June 20 financial bills and salary report?
Trustee Barshis? Yes. Trustee Fishman?
Yes.
Trustee Johnson?
I'll vote no.
Trustee Riddle? Absent. Trustee Rogers?
Yes.
Trustee Wolf?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
It's been moved and adopted by, with all say, put it to the vote. We've got the vote recorded. Okay, moving right along. We now have an action item for ordinance number 2020-21-197. Would you like to discuss it, trustee Rogers?
Yes, we could start by, with the motion and then have the discussion following that. I move approval of ordinance 2020-21-197, the tentative combined annual budget and appropriation ordinance.
I will second it.
There is, excuse me, there is one correction, and that is regarding the number that was listed, and I'm sorry to interrupt, I should have said that before. And this is where I say, but it's with the, find it. There's a number that is, needs to be updated as it refers to the reference number, and it's on section six, number D, with an asterisk, after, at the, at the bottom of that section, and instead of C, resolution 2017-18 hyphen 192, it should read 2018-19-201. So, I just want to bring that to light, and so, with that exception, do you want to restate that motion, trustee Rogers? Or you want me to?
You let me know, Madam President, when the time for questions are, please.
Okay.
Well, we can amend the motion to reflect the correction in the reference to the ordinance. That can be recorded in the minutes.
Thanks. And it's.
And I think that needs to be affirmed by the seconder.
I will second again. Re second. Thank you.
Trustee Rogers to approve ordinance to publish the budget and appropriation ordinance number 2020-21-197 with the correction that was stated. Is there a discussion? I think you had some, trustee.
Basically, just to fill in some information, the tentative budget and appropriation ordinance is in the calendar to be approved tonight so that it can be published in preparation for the required public hearing prior to the August board meeting. So, this is not the final adoption. This represents preparing the information for the tentative ordinance so that it can be published. We still have an opportunity to make amendments prior to adoption. Typically, we, we act on this for final purposes in August. It could, however, if absolutely necessary, be extended to September. What follows this, then, is the levy, which we adopt in the fall. This ordinance reflects the recommendation of the Finance Committee, and it is, needless to say, under the circumstances that we've been dealing with this year, it represents our best estimate, or the staff's best estimate, of how we should proceed in what is clearly an uncertain period of time. There are things that we're looking at that no library or has dealt with in the past. We've not had a pandemic of, of any magnitude during my time on this board until now, and so, you know, this represents a, you know, the necessary steps for us to have the authority to proceed with library operations. It's also important to recognize that the appropriations authorize expenditures which we may not make if we don't need to do so. So, the issue here is that the appropriation is necessary in order to provide the board with the authority to spend if necessary. This is not a commitment to spend all of the money that is designated in this ordinance. So, that's another important issue, and, and so, you know, with that, I think we can, Anthony, if you have anything you want to add before we open it up for questions?
I have something. We voted on this budget last month, so it has been voted on, and so, this is, that's all I wanted to say, because it has been voted on the budget, but we have not voted to spend the money and to allocate that money for the expenditure. Anthony?
Yeah, so, to the point of the amended motion at the top of our conversation on the appropriation ordinance, the ordinance is referencing presently, the tentative ordinance is referencing resolution 2017-18, resolution amending a plan, the special reserve fund plan. That date is older. We have a newer version of that that was approved last June. That is the number that was provided in the amended motion. Just for everyone's memory, the library did last fall go into agreement with Inberg Anderson Architects to complete a capital reserve study. That study is nearing completion. We've received a draft version of that report, and we are scheduling a meeting in advance. I'm sorry, I'm getting a little bit of chatter here. One second. We're, we're going to be having a meeting in advance of our August meeting, so when we approve the BNA at next month's meeting, the week prior to that, we will have a special meeting where we will meet with Joe Huberty from Inberg Anderson, and he will provide us an overview of that document, which will help to inform the next version of the resolution amending a plan, the special reserve fund plan. And that is why in June, we did not present or approve an updated version of that resolution, and therefore, we are referencing last year's version. It still remains true and contains the same content as what we've looked at in the past. I anticipate that this next version that we're going to be making will be more inclusive and will have updated estimates, and certainly more detail than what we've been providing in recent years. But I wanted to make sure that we have that, that bit recorded, because that is a key distinction in this. Any, any questions, comments, discussion about the content of the BNA?
Yes, please. Man. Thank you. So, is this a, is this the same as last year, is it an increase over last year's?
Well, the same methodology was applied to this year's proposal as was last, as is reflected in the, the cover pages that are in front of the BNA that you're looking at this evening. We use the same methodology that we did last year and as recommended by our attorney.
Is it, is the bottom line number larger, the same or smaller than last year's?
It's essentially the same.
And so, if we have a 9%, you know, surplus, or didn't spend, or whatever the term is of $400,000, $500,000-ish, do we want to account for that in this year's budget, or we anticipate only spending 91% of this budget, or how are we thinking about that?
Yeah, so, a key piece to remember about the budget and appropriation ordinance is that it is an authorization to spend the budget. It is not the budget. The budget was approved at last month's meeting. What we're looking at here is the authorization, the legal authority to be able to spend the resources that we receive. So, you know, that what we're looking at here is simply a reflection of the numbers that we incorporated from the budget from last month, and that is built into this document. The, the places where it deviates a little bit are, are the two areas that I indicated in my cover pages, which were the same as what we did last year, and those are grants. In the event that the library applies for a grant and receives it, we need to be able to be authorized to expend those revenues. So, we have raised the, the grant line a little bit so that we can account for any grants that we might receive. As you see in the treasures report this month, we did in fact receive some grant money in, in June, and so, because we appropriated for that, we are able to, to spend that. The other line is health insurance, and we know that in the middle of a pandemic, that there's a lot of variables that are involved in that, and we expect that when we receive our quote in January of 21, that there will likely be an increase in that. We can't estimate what that is right now, but we figure about a 10% increase over what our expenditures were last year is a reasonable estimate for what we should be appropriating for this line so that we can cover the, the second half of the fiscal year. So, those are the two areas that really deviate, and, and that follows the same formula that we did for last year's appropriation.
Okay, last one for me is that if, you know, this year is anything like the last year's, is a reasonable assumption that we'll spend in the low 90s of what we are asked to approve tonight, so that at this time next year, we'll likely have the same sort of surplus? Is that a reasonable assumption to make?
Well, when the library passed the, the budget last month, we proposed a budget that we think we, for the expenses that we feel that we need to operate, which was the same case back in June of 2019 when we passed this budget that we got close to 92% with. And, you know, I, I think, given the fact that the library was closed for four months, and, you know, honestly, I'm kind of proud of the fact that we got to 92% in the middle of a pandemic. I, I think that we were able to maintain our revenues fairly well. We did a good job of estimating what they were going to be, and the staff delivered. So, again, I feel like what we proposed last month and what we discussed with the proposed budget, there are a lot of modifications, a lot of lines were adjusted, the bottom line was essentially the same. We moved things around to try to account for what we think is going to be coming up, but there are so many variables that I think are difficult to, to assess and predict. But I think with our reasonable estimates, yes, what we passed last month, I think is a reasonable budget that will sustain and maintain the library services for this coming fiscal year. So, I, you know, our, our goal is always to get as close to 100% and not to, and not to budget any more than what we think we're going to need. And I think in, in the last two years, we've demonstrated that we've gotten much closer than, than we have in years past.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions about the appropriation?
Okay. It's been moved by trustee Rogers and seconded by trustee Wolf. To, a motion to publish the BNA ordinance to approve the tentative BNA budget. Can we have a roll call?
John, you're muted.
Trustee Barshis, yes. Trustee Fishman?
Yes.
Trustee Johnson?
No.
Trustee Riddle? Absent. Trustee Roger?
Sorry. Ron, you're muted.
Okay. Trustee Rogers?
Yes.
Trustee Wolf?
Yes.
And trustee McDonald?
Yes.
And right now, it's been, the motion, the motion won, so, right now, we have a contract approval for the HVAC preventative maintenance agreement. Trustee Austin, Director Austin, would like to talk a bit about this contract for the HVAC system?
Sure. So, Hill Mechanical has been the library's HVAC contractor since we went out for public bid in 2015. Their expenses have been flat since, and we are really satisfied with the technician that's been serving us. He has been incredibly responsive. This contract is, I think, one of the, one of the key hallmarks of being able to maintain our operations, keeping the building up and running. So, we're, we're satisfied with Hill Mechanical, and I think we will, we will likely want to go out for a public bid at some point here in the near future again, but I think for this coming fiscal year, we're satisfied and would like to recommend that you approve the contract as before you for us to continue for one more year.
And I, oh, I'm sorry, is it discussion time, Madam President?
Well, we need to put the motion on the table.
We need to put the motion. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve the contract with Hill Mechanical for prevented maintenance, maintenance services in an amount not to exceed 26,500.
I'll second. Okay. Trustee Fishman seconded it. Discussion?
No, I'm fine, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. It's been moved by trustee Rogers and seconded by trustee Fishman to adopt the contract by the Hill Group for the HVAC system, to maintain the HVAC system for 12 months and not to exceed 26,500. Can we have a roll call?
Trustee Barshis? Yes. Trustee Fishman?
Yes.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Riddle? Absent. Trustee Rogers?
Yes.
Trustee Wolf?
Yes.
And trustee McDonald?
Yes.
And the motion passed.
Thank you.
Well, discussion, some good news, if you've not seen the website, trustee Rogers has been named Illinois trustee of the year.
Oh.
It will be virtual, and.
Congratulations. Thank you.
And so, you can see it, and to highlight it, basically, it's an annual citation is awarded to a public library trustee for achievement, leadership, and service to libraries. And trustee Rogers has been on the board since 1984. He served on almost every committee, and he's responsible for the expansion, it almost tripled what the library was, and I think also, his actions with the North Suburban Library System was another reason in terms of what his service was. But we were able to get the lowing support documents from two, three of the directors that served, as well as from former board Kathleen Olafland. So, it'll be a virtual service, and so, for a much well-deserved honor, so, you all, little hands up, and so, congratulations.
Thank you.
Nice picture, too. I like that.
Very nice.
Ron, is there some reason I didn't see it in the ILLA report? Would they have had it in there?
No, it was just announced today.
Okay. Okay.
They had a press release yesterday, and they will probably have more information posted coming up.
Oh, nice. Congratulations.
Okay. And next session, I've lost, all my little papers are all messed up. Oh. Also, here. Too much.
Okay, well, the next item on the agenda is item A under discussion items, and this is our chapter review for serving our public 4.0. This is the standards for online public libraries. In this chapter, chapter eight refers to system member responsibilities and resource sharing. And to kind of piggyback off of what Lisa just said, Willmet Library has been very active in system membership for years, dating back to the NSLS system. We have very fond memories of the North Suburban Library System and our affiliation there. Rob obviously was very active in, in that, and as part of the literary circle programs in particular. Our participation as Willmet Library has been very strong with NSLS historically, and it continues with, with Rails. Ron served as part of the public policy committee, and I just ended my tenure on public policy committee this past month. So, we have, we have maintained active memberships in committee work, as well as maintaining the library's membership and full participation in various meetings. We also fulfill all of our responsibilities as part of ILL. We're, we're actively one of the strongest users, one of the strongest borrowers and lenders of interlibrary loan services. So, when it comes to our participation within the guidelines that are set within here, again, we, we meet and exceed all the recommendations. We are also a full member of CCS and a fully participative member of CCS. So, I think, I guess I would just reiterate that when you look at that checklist on the back, that we meet, we meet all the criteria for each of those. I, I don't know if you want to go into much more detail about this. This one was a little bit more boilerplate, but if there's any questions that you've got about resource sharing, about our, our role and relationship with Rails or CCS, I would be more than happy to get into those details with you all. But once again, happy to see that we continue to, to either meet or exceed these standards.
Okay, you want to give your directors a review and update of the pandemic response and reopening plan?
Okay.
I have to say, I felt very safe, and everything was well laid out and spaced out when I came to visit, and it was so good.
Yeah. I know that I've seen a few of you here, so, you know, for anyone who has been in the library since, or have been on site since we reopened here in July, would you like to give any testimonials or any, any thoughts on what your experience was?
I, I'd say, you know, very calm, everyone seemed, you know, in control of what was going on. The plexiglass is, is very reassuring. As Lisa said, the spots on the floor were great. I used the self-checkout, which was very easy, convenient, and, and, you know, went very smoothly. So, you know, I wasn't, I didn't linger, but I felt like the time I spent was just right, and so, everyone, I didn't go upstairs, but I, I'm sure it was the same, and I liked that you were counting and allow, and, you know, continuing to keep tabs on how many people are entering the building at one, would be there at one time. So, that's very reassuring. Signage was good. I, I always think signage is, is excellent, you know, so, looking good. I was very pleased. Thank you.
It was, I, I liked having the, seeing the book drop at the front door. Excuse me. I think it made a statement, you know, people would stop to ask what that is, or do I put my book there, or whatever, and it was kind of welcoming. Go away in the back and dump it in something out there, and it gave, it gave the patron time, if he or she had a question, he could ask it right there, and then he'd get it answered. And I agree with Joan, everything looks set up very, very well, and looked like people obeying what they should.
Well, thank you. Thanks for the overview and for coming in and checking it out. So, I want to give you some, some overviews. First, I guess what I'd like to do first is to show you our screen that kind of outlines what our plan has been since we've been reopened. So, I'm going to share this with you. This is currently on the website, and this is our reopening plan. So, since we moved into phase four, our plan was to reopen the facility and to implement some restrictions and general safety protocols and guidelines. So, our expectation, our hours, we'll start with that, is, is a little reduced. The hours of the public are 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM Monday through Friday, and 10:00 to 3:00 on Saturdays, and we've been asking patrons who have been coming in to make their visits brief, to come in, to browse the collections, check out what they need, and take your items home to enjoy. We're allowing computer use sessions for an hour, and if there are any, if, if folks need some modifications, we're working with folks on a, as needed basis. Seating is rather limited, and we wanted to start that way just to see. Seating is rather limited, and we wanted to start that way just to see what our attendance was. The capacity of the building is 50. We have not met capacity yet. At our busiest time, which was our first hour on Monday, the 13th, the day that we reopened, we had nearly 40 people in the building at that time, and it got a little congested, primarily because, you know, I think as Joan noted, a lot of folks were primarily focusing on the first floor. That's where a lot of the activity is, the computers, the high interest collections and so on. And if you get 30 to 40 people that are congregating in a space like that, it certainly becomes a bottleneck and a bit of a challenge. So we are keeping track of how many folks are coming in the building. We have a security monitor at the front door who is keeping count. We also have a digital people counter as well that's verifying those numbers, and we're keeping, we're keeping tabs on that throughout the day. So as a result, we've had to limit some things, anything that would prolong someone's use of the library and potentially uncreate lines. As I said before, we have not reached capacity, so there have been no lines. But we do have a queue set up outside in the event that we do reach capacity, in which case we would then ask folks to kind of move along and limit the time that they're in the building. So like I said, we've removed some seating. We have limited the study rooms and meeting rooms presently. When the time comes for us to, to move forward and to expand some services, then we'll look at trying to offer some additional services in the future. But for right now, this is where we're at as we start week two. So our safety precautions are all done with an abundance of caution in reference to COVID. We're requiring masks for all patrons two and older, and that face coverings must be worn over the mouth and nose at all times when you're in the library. We really have not had any issues whatsoever with folks refusing to wear masks, which has been wonderful. Folks are very compliant. We are asking everyone to practice social distancing and try to maintain six feet of distance or greater at all times. Again, this has been generally well-followed, except there are some times at the entrance where things can get congested. So we're evaluating that and seeing if there's something we can do with spacing. But by and large, we've generally been good there. As I said, our capacity is limited. We have protective acrylic shields that are up at all of our service desks. This past week, I've been going through with the managers, and we've been determining if we need to make any modifications to those. One of the things that we've noticed is that our patrons love us so much that they want to get close to us, and they kind of try to come around the side of the barrier and don't put the barrier between themselves and the staff. That's really sweet, but we need to, we need to keep that barrier between us. So we might actually be adding a return on a couple of the desks where we've got these barriers, just to give that visual reminder that, hey, the idea is you're supposed to keep this thing between, between people. We're limiting the use of the elevators to single occupancy or single households, and that's generally gone really well. The stair use can be a bit of a tight space, but folks have been very good and just kind of wait at the landings so that folks don't cluster on the stairs. And I would say anecdotally that pretty much everyone who enters the building and leaves the building takes advantage of the hand sanitizer. So it's nice to know that folks have clean hands when they enter and when they leave. And as before, we continue to quarantine all the materials that were circulating for a period of three days in reference to Rails, Rails' guidelines. So in terms of the services that are available inside the library right now, patrons have full access to the collections. You can check out books, movies, and music and other resources. Pick up holds at the circulation desk. That's the default location for holds now. We did launch a new service in early July where we're making appointments in the parking lot, and that continues to be really popular. So when folks get a holds notification that their material is available for them, they can then click on a link that allows them to schedule a time to come in and pick up. A lot of folks are doing that. As I said earlier, you can browse the collections. Our professional reference and readers advisory services are available for children and adults. We've got our computer stations are open. Our Wi-Fi access continues to be available. We've also added four new access points for the Wi-Fi within the last month. This Wi-Fi now goes outside of the building. So the first few rows of the parking lot now have Wi-Fi coverage, as does the lawn. So if folks want to take advantage of the nice weather and still use our Wi-Fi, they can do so. And the Wi-Fi is on 24/7. We are also offering printing, scanning, and copying. As I said before, the seating is limited, but we do have a fair amount of seating still available throughout the library, particularly in some of the higher-traffic corridors, so that folks with mobility impairments have a place to rest for a period. Our outdoor book drops remain the primary point of returns, but it's true that right inside the door, as Jan noted, that we've got the book returns, the book bins. There's one immediately inside the vestibule, as well as one at the circulation desk. And our last request is that if folks are bringing children with them, that we ask them to keep the children with them at all times, and that we're also extending the service that, hey, if you want to watch your kids, we'll help select the materials for you. We just know that kids run off, and they're maybe not as good at social distancing or keeping their masks on. And like I said before, everyone has been really, really compliant with our guidelines. So a few things have been limited. As I said before, the study rooms are not available. We're not allowing room rentals right now, primarily because the room rentals, those rooms are being occupied by other, other services right now. Because we have to quarantine, we've got thousands of items that are having to wait a few days before they can be processed. We need a space to do that. So the auditorium is continuing to serve that purpose. Every delivery that we receive, the mail, various boxes, all the books that get returned, they all go to the auditorium for quarantine. The periodicals room is currently closed. Magazines are holdable, but browsing magazines inside the library is currently not allowed. There was some information that was provided earlier this week in the second report from the RELM study that indicates that the coronavirus may stand on magazines longer than some other services, some other surfaces. Rails has not made any updates to their guidelines, but I think this is something that we're going to continue to study, because it seems that magazines might potentially be a site of transmission, especially as they are an ephemeral and heavily-used resource. We want to make sure that we're keeping those things sequestered, at least for the time being, until we know a little bit more about the possible transmissibility of the virus through those items. As before, we are not offering in-person programming, at least through September. We are continuing to offer a whole variety of virtual programs, and we can get into that a little bit later, but they have been successful, and we're going to continue to offer that for folks. A lot of the interactives, toys, games, and so on have been removed from the floor in an effort primarily to keep people moving, but also because they're really hard to keep clean. We're not allowing people to eat or drink in the library at this time, primarily because you can't do that if you're wearing a mask. And we're asking people to keep their masks on. The Friends are still not in operation at the library right now. So we're not accepting material donations. Again, for the primary reason is we just, we don't know about the transmissibility on materials, and we want to keep our volunteer staff healthy and safe. So the Friends have elected to hold back a little while. So BDU remains closed, and all the Friends services are currently suspended. We're, the off-site material returns are closed right now. However, we're evaluating the trending of our returns. I think for right now, we're going to keep them closed a little while longer, but there's a possibility as our staffing model shifts and if our hours increase. And after, we have a chance to talk about something here in a moment that I'll discuss with you about resuming intra-library loans. Once we have a better sense for what our return rate is, we'll have a better sense for if we can keep the book drops open 24/7 and then reopen the remote ones. So TBD, stay tuned. I think August is probably the time that we would be reevaluating our position on that matter. For now, the parking lot book drops and the ones inside the library are places where we're accepting returns. So this is kind of an overview of where we stand right now in this modified environment. This is, this is the library's current stage. The next stage would be to, if, if we continue to see that the pandemic and local outbreaks have subsided, if we were to move forward and try to offer additional services, we would see a loosening of some of these restrictions. We would potentially see the capacity of the library rise. We would see some new services that would be relaunched. Rooms may become more available, that sort of thing. So this is kind of where we're at in the beginning of week two of having the facility reopened. Do you all have any questions about where we're at right now with the physical library's opening?
What percentage of your books would you say are still curbside pickup?
Well, that's really shifted a lot in the last week. I think primarily because folks are interested in seeing just what the public library looks like since it's been reopened. So the default location right now for all hold material is the circulation desk. When patrons get, receive that notice and they want to schedule an appointment, that morning, we generate a report of who all the folks are that want to get their materials at the parking lot. And we, we check them out, bag them, and have them ready at the back door so that we can instantly drop them off when patrons arrive. At this time, I would say that it's probably about 20%. But last week, it was, it was more like 60%. So that's kind of where we're at. But again, we're continuing to study that. I think folks are liking the ability to get back in the building, but we're still receiving a lot of positive feedback about the parking lot service, so much so that I think we're going to likely need to continue that even after the pandemic subsides. It's a value-added service. Other, other questions, comments, questions about reopening?
What's the, you know, given the hard cap on occupancy, what's the percentage roughly of staff that are working?
Well, all staff are back to work. We're on modified work schedules. The, the hours of the building are 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. So a lot of work that can't be done during open hours is being done outside of those hours. We still have some staff who are working remotely as well. A lot of the program planning, some collection development, remote customer service done via chat and email and so on is being conducted remotely. So we're trying to keep the capacity of the building at a manageable rate and trying to keep staff areas less populated if possible, but all staff are back to work.
Are we at like same hours of, you know, if we had close to zero, you know, a couple of months ago, or we had 100% of, you know, non-pandemic hourly spend these days? Or are we sort of like a fewer hours or sort of just back to normal in terms of staff spend?
Are you talking about payroll?
Yeah. Yeah, just sort of cost of running it, right? Given that it's shrunk capacity, did it, did it impact our costs of running the library at all?
I think it's still a little early to determine, you know, what, what the cost is in terms of payroll, because there are a lot of variables that are flexing at the moment. We're experiencing about a 10% reduction in force right now due to retirements. I'll get into the staffing model here in a moment. That's caused some challenges in terms of direct public service, and some key positions have been vacated. Again, this is primarily due to retirements. A few folks who worked evenings and weekend hours have had to modify their schedules. So that's a little bit of a difference, but otherwise, I would say we're right at where we would expect to be. Other, other questions? Jan, you're muted. Still muted. If you look at your picture in the upper right-hand corner, there's a little blue button. No, not yet. There you go.
Okay. I can't see it. But what I did want to say, and I, I think I probably speak for all of us, is just to thank everybody, yourself included, for all the, and the plans and the development of plans that have helped our library going this time. It's been wonderful. And it's been wonderful to see. And I think we're all very grateful for what you've done.
Well, thank you, Jan. And I really appreciate all your support. Again, obviously, this is an unprecedented time. We've all had to kind of develop our own playbook and make modifications as we've gone along. And I really have to applaud the staff. They've been very resilient, innovative at times, and very, very much adapting to things as they shift in the moment. And we continue to. And that's, like I said, you know, that we're making changes every day to try to make things better. That's, that's kind of our mantra. So we're listening. If there's anything that you think that we can build upon or improve, let us know, and we're going to continue to do our best to make those changes.
Okay. Be sure the staff knows.
Thank you so much, Jan. I will pass that along.
Let me take that opportunity, then, as an idea for your staff to consider, is we're clearly going to go into more e-learning in the fall and winter at some capacity, to the extent the, you know, child services folks can think about how they can be as much of a resource to families that are going to be grappling with e-learning as much as possible, and consider, you know, a more structured or formal relationship with D39 or EvoCA, and probably the high school, too, come to think of it. There's, from the parent's perspective, there is a tidal wave of need and frustration at navigating how to be a teacher and a working parent at the same time. And if we expect that the fall and winter outbreak will be worse than it was in the spring, that we can expect, hopefully it won't happen, but there may be months and months of it, to the extent you guys can be thinking about how you can plug into that e-learning need, that would be my suggestion for you to consider.
Thank you, Dan. That's definitely on the forefront of our minds as well.
I know the whole maker movement was sort of shut down, but would it be a possibility to do maker kits if parents could pick up and then do virtual maker events? We're not supposed to be micromanaging. But I was just thinking of, you know, they could pick the kits up and then they could do the activities. Does that make any?
Yes. In fact, we've already done that, and we'll continue to grow upon that. Yes, we have STEAM kits that are available. There's a little bit of that in my report, but yes, definitely, definitely take a look. They're, they're in our grab-and-go section right at the beginning of, front of the library when you first come in. And Ruth, Ruth Bell has been a part of that process for us. We're, they've been wildly popular.
Does the public know about the extended Wi-Fi? How has that been publicized? So, I mean, it's good, it's available, but are they aware of it?
I'm going to say probably not, because we haven't done a press release about that. I mean, we'll, I'll look, I'll look into seeing how we might be able to better promote that. The, the challenge there is, you know, I, I think there could be potential diminishing returns the more that we publicize it. So I'd like to try to, to manage the access that we've got to it first and, and make sure that it's an appropriate solution before we try to more widely publicize it. So it's in a soft-launch phase right now. And there is, there is a website that's dedicated to pandemic services that libraries are offering, including an index of libraries that are offering remote Wi-Fi, and we're updating our content on that. So that will be another source of publicity outside of our library that's done by a third party that will help folks connect, help connect folks with free internet access.
Just quick follow-up. Have you thought about or looked at the cost of expanding that, you know, deeper outside or footprint at all? If the answer is no, that's fine, just curious.
Of course. Of course, we're looking at that. The challenge is that we would have to completely upgrade our Wi-Fi system. The system that we've got right now is at its end of life, is no longer supported, and we cannot purchase additional radios for it. So the new system actually requires additional radios, more than we have currently. We would have to double the amount of radios, but it would provide broader coverage. I'm certainly looking into that, and that will be part of a forthcoming iteration of the capital reserve plan, that we will try to budget for that in the next, like, two years, I think. But for right now, what we've got is an expanded network of radios that has been offered to us through CBI. They've gotten them from some clients that have already upgraded their systems. And I think this is, we're going to try this system out for a while and, and see how well this works for us. And if we need to expand it, you know, sooner than later, then we will, to try to meet demand. But for right now, I think this is a good start. We got a lot of other tech projects coming up this year, too, to, to look into. All right. Anything else about reopening that we want to discuss? And we can certainly get into it a little bit more in my report.
Ready for your director?
Okay. All right. Well, let's get into that.
Can you check your voice? Because it's coming through kind of tinny. It was coming through. It was coming through through my computer was sort of tinny. I don't know if anybody else was experiencing that.
All right. Anyone else having issues with that? I'm gonna I'm gonna ask you for this next portion to just mute yourselves. I think there's a bit of feedback. So I'm gonna I'm gonna mute the folks that were not muted.
Anthony, you're very tinny. Anthony, I'm gonna mute myself again, but you're very tinny with with your voice towards me as well.
I'm sorry, you guys. Is this any better? If it's not.
Sounds a little better.
Okay. If if this is not good, if you can just wave at me, I will call in so that you can hear me. Are you okay, Lisa? Thumbs up?
I think it's easier if you call in. I think the voice will be better since this is your main, your second major report.
Okay. Bear with me a moment.
Okay. That's not going to be good. How's that? Is this better?
I think so.
It's not tinny, but it needs to be just a wee bit louder.
Oh, my gosh, you guys. I'll try to project my voice a little bit more. Is this okay?
This is working for me.
Working now.
Yay. Okay. All right. Right as I'm losing my voice too. Okay. So as I was mentioning before, door accounts, since the library has reopened, I wanted to give you an update about our door accounts. So on our first day, we averaged about 58 patrons an hour and we had approximately half of what we would normally do on a full, on a full 12 hour day. Now granted, we're only open eight hours during during our time. So we had 466 people visit the library on Monday, the 13th. And that was our highest total so far. Since then, it has been in about the 300 to 350 range for our daily attendance. So that's been a very manageable number for us. And I think it reflects, you know, the patrons are recognizing that they are in the middle of a pandemic and they're continuing to get services in other ways, but also limiting the time that they're in the library. So we're averaging, as I said, about 40 patrons an hour with this, you know, somewhere in the 300 to 350 range, which is, which is generally good for us. So that's been, that's been great. At the June meeting, we we moved to go fine free effective July 1, and that's been great for us so far. Beginning tomorrow, CCS and Innovative will be partnering to purge the first stage of outstanding fines on our patrons' cards. So the ones tomorrow that will be purged is anything that is a fine that's been on a patron's account from 2013 and back. All right. So seven years and older, these these will no longer be on a patron's account. And that can, that also includes items that have been long billed. So if someone had a lost item or something that's been overdue for seven years, we're just going to be done with it. And CCS is doing that for all 26 member libraries, not just for Wilmet Library. Then for all the libraries who went fine free and elected to have this service, each member library will have their patrons' cards purged purged of fines on Thursday, the 23rd. So if any of you should happen to have a small fine on your card, by end of day on Thursday, the 23rd, it should magically disappear. I've got a 10 cent fine on my card, so I'm I'm going to watch that. And when that goes away, then I know it's been complete. So we'll we'll keep an eye on that. Any questions about being fined free? All right. I can give you an update on the summer reading club. It's an unusual time for for summer reading, obviously. So far, we have had 338 kids that have been reporting for 10 days and 81 kids that have been reporting for 20 days. So that's, that's pretty good. We're getting about 15 to 25 kids are reporting their their reading to the library each day. And we're keeping track of that on the window outside of the media room. So if you go by the front of the library, there's a visual out there that reflects what the students' participation has been in our program this year. Participation has been great so far in terms of the the prizes. There are good incentives. So thanks to the friends for supporting this. We've just added 100 more Dairy Queen gift certificates this this week and 200 additional gift certificates for the book stall. So again, thank you to the friends for that awesome partnership and we're thrilled to be able to offer that. We are, we are putting out lawn signs to promote the summer reading program as well. Have any of you gotten any lawn signs to promote it at home? I would like to encourage you all to come by and grab one. And if you don't want to come by the library, guess what? I'll come by and bring it to your house. So if you would like one, just let me know. There are a few that are on display outside of the library right now. A number of patrons have been picking them up as well. So we'll, I just want to remind you that those are available. All right. So into my report, just wanted to touch on a couple of things. I'll hold this up. Here's a picture of the take home steam kits. So that was on page two of my report as an example of some of the maker type stuff that you can do at home. Moving along in the director's report under the strategic plan updates, I just wanted to draw attention to one of the programs that we offered. On June 30, Rachel Garcia hosted a program called the Montgomery Travelers Discovery and Growth from Racial Inequality to Passion for True Justice. We had over 55 people attend this awesome program. We're going to continue to offer programming like this in our efforts to try to promote equity, diversity and inclusion and to reinforce the statement that we issued in early June. This is just part of our culture and we're going to continue to offer programming that supports this. In Objective 4.4, all librarians on staff were encouraged to attend the virtual ALA conference and we had over 20 librarians that participated or library staff members participated in the program. At the very tail end of my report, you will see a list of the types of workshops that they attended. A lot of staff wrote reports and they got wonderful takeaways that they're going to try to apply to their learnings this year and in their development of other programming and services going forward. So we're really thrilled about that. That's our highest success rate with any type of a conference program attendance before. So the pandemic is good for some things like that. In Objective 5.5, with relation to improving internal library communications, this month we implemented Microsoft Teams. This has been a really awesome communication tool. I don't know how many of you are familiar with this, but it's essentially kind of like, kind of like Google Docs and the whole Google Cloud suite of Ops, but it's available through through Microsoft, which integrates with our Outlook and all of our Office software. It basically allows us to live chat with one another. We can conference in place of Zoom. We can share documents in the cloud and actively edit things together. It's just been a wonderful collaborative and communication tool. We're all still kind of learning it and some folks are quicker to take on to it than others, but it's been really great so far. Moving on to the bottom of that page, when we get into our collections, our digital circulation continues to be really strong. Even though we're we're open again, we're still seeing strong numbers posted in Overdrive. And I wanted to let you know that Overdrive has recently acquired RB Digital. RB Digital is the platform that has long been recorded books, as the RB is recorded books. So they were one of the early pioneers in books on tape, audiobooks. So that was an audiobook platform that was available concurrent with Overdrive. Overdrive has acquired them. RB RB also acquired Zineo a while back and Zineo was rolled into that suite. Zineo is a digital magazine platform. And now Overdrive is managing digital magazines, which I know has been a long part of their service model. That's one of the things that they have not offered. So with the integration of this this expanded audiobook platform and magazine platform, the library will have one less platform for patrons to have to navigate. It will radically simplify the way that we're able to offer digital services going forward. So we're, we're really excited about that. Overdrive is a very familiar name. I know a lot of you are using the Libby app. This will all be available as part of Libby once these things get more more integrated. The news is still pretty fresh. I don't have a lot of detail about it to share right now, but we're very much excited for the fact that Overdrive and RB Digital are merging. On page seven of my report, you'll see that there's this this graphic of all these carts. That was a pretty typical day in June. When we first started circulating holds again and we're really ramping up our parking lot pickup to allow patrons to be able to access the collections, we were processing thousands and thousands of materials a day. And at that time, we were also manually making phone calls to all of the patrons so that they would be able to ask us questions and learn a little bit more about what our service model was while we were also telling them how they could take advantage of our new services via the parking lot. It was a very time consuming process, but the staff did a fabulous job with it and I really want to give them credit for all the extra effort that they put into that. That was a daily occurrence, thousands of materials. Today, June 20, or July 21, Wilmet Library joined a number of other CCS libraries in expanding our intra CCS loan. I want to share this screen with you so that you can see which libraries are now participating in this. If it lets me. I don't know why it's not letting me do this. Here we go. All right. So you can see that beginning today, the following libraries have opted to resume interlibrary intra CCS loan. So that means that patrons of the Wilmet Library will now be able to place holds in the catalog and receive those materials from these libraries. This is a, this is a radically expanded offering of services that we're able to extend today. Before, patrons were really only able to get materials from Wilmet Library. Now they can get them from all of these libraries within CCS. So when you log into the catalog and place holds, any existing holds that are out there can now be trapped by any other member library that's that's offering this service. And the collections are now available at all these libraries to our patrons. So immediately in our service area, you can see that Glenview and Highland Park are up there, Morton Grove, Niles. And there we are, Wilmet and Zion is kind of down here at the bottom. These, on a monthly basis, CCS will allow other libraries to join in intra CCS loans. So we'll, in a month, we'll see if there's anyone else that comes on in August and September. But we're really excited about that. So what that means is that we can send and receive intra CCS loans, that we're going to be doing our pick list at least once daily, and we do, we do it at least twice daily. We get our Rails delivery bins on a daily basis and those have already doubled from what we've seen previously. So there's a lot of material getting circulated. And that we're going to continue to quarantine our materials in accordance with Rails guidance. So anyway, I wanted to share that detail with you. So when we see these carts and carts of books for our patrons, now other libraries are going to be helping to fulfill that process as well. I gave an update on summer reading club. Joan had mentioned that she used our new self checkout machines. I've got a picture of those here for you too. We have two new self checkout machines that we approved back in May. Those were installed in early July and the public has taken use of them so far. They're a lot easier to use than the old ones. And the cool thing is that they're also going to be forward compatible with our RFID system when we get that implemented later this fiscal year. So one of those units is currently on top of the circulation desk and the other one is where you used to find the coffee maker right across from the recent arrivals desk. We've talked about the facility a little bit more. I've got pictures of the facility in there, highlights from our social media campaign. And then under human resources, I've got some information to share. So as I mentioned earlier regarding payroll, we have had some turnover and that was to be expected, that there was going to be a bit of that. So beginning in July, we did experience about a 10% reduction in force and that has caused a whole host of other challenges for us, obviously, as we're trying to scale up and reopen the facility. We are saying goodbye to a few staff members that have been with us for a long time who have elected to retire. The first that is probably most familiar to you all is Cynthia McMillan. She is, she was my administrative assistant and she faithfully served the library for 21 years. Beloved staff member. We're sorry to see Cynthia go, but we're really thrilled for her and wish her all the best in retirement. One of these days when we're out of the pandemic, we're gonna, we're gonna go to dinner. So and then we can actually celebrate. Also retiring, Barbara Goodman in adult services. She's served us for 31 years. She is an integral part of our One Book Everyone Reads program and has been a really great service to us as well. Leslie Laidoff, who also served us for over 30 some years, retired a few years ago, but came back as a sub. And she finally decided to retire, retire, retire. So we bid farewell to Leslie. And then we also are bidding farewell this Friday to circulation manager Luciano Ward. Luciano's been with us for 18 years in his capacity and obviously that's a big challenge for us as we're creating a lot of modifications in circulation right now. So that position is currently posted. We're accepting applications right now through the end of the month. And it's an unusual time to be hiring for a manager, I'll say. So we'll have to see what that interview and review process goes like, but that position is out there as well. So that's just a kind of a taste of what some of the things are that are going on personnel wise at the library. There's a lot more content in my report, so I'm going to pause there and see if you've got any questions for me.
Anthony, one question for you. For Luciano's position, will he be also under your internal as well?
Obviously, we're certainly open to that.
Thank you.
Yep. Any other questions or, oh, Jan, I think you're muted, you're muted. You're still muted, Jan. There you go.
Okay. Just a question. The people on the list, are they already officially retired or are there a couple who are going to retire?
Well, if you do the math, you can tell that when I say that there's 10%, but you see those numbers there, that that's not the complete list. So stay tuned. There's, there's more to come.
So, but the question is, the people on that list are already gone from the library?
Essentially.
Okay.
This may be for a later board meeting. An apologies for my colleague in the background. You know, if we anticipate being in reduced capacity for a significant part of the coming year, and if now's not the time to answer it, that's fine too, Anthony. But how, how do we sort of, on the sort of just straight common sense approach, sort of explain why we're, you know, at the same budget level if we anticipate our services might look like they did this year when we were closed for three or four months? I recognize that may be a much broader question. If now's not the time, that's fine, but that's sort of my open question that I don't feel like I have a good answer for.
Well, I think we have to plan accordingly for for our full services. And that was our operating plan when we brought the budget forward in this early budget cycle in the spring. when we brought the budget forward in this early budget cycle in the spring. We did discuss that at length in meetings this spring, I feel. Trustees, if you want to back me up on that, feel free. But I think, you know, as part of our planning process, we wanted to make sure that we didn't limit unnecessarily any of the services that we would be able to offer. So we want to prepare to be able to scale to this remote environment and to serve the public as directly as possible at the fullest of our capacity. And if we budgeted with any reduction in force, we would potentially be shooting ourselves in the foot and be ill-equipped to be able to deliver those services. So our methodology has been to prepare and to offer the services as best as we can, as we can, and to adapt as needed. So that's kind of, that's what our plan has been. Obviously, you can't always anticipate when you're going to see a reduction in force like this in terms of retirement. Some of it is planned, some of it's unanticipated. People can come and go. And we post and fill positions as soon as those vacancies appear, and we evaluate our staffing model and try to determine if there's other ways that we can do things differently, if that's a time to restructure or to rethink the way that we've been doing something. There are a lot of factors that are at play there. So I think when the board approved this budget, the plan was that we wanted to try to keep things as consistent as possible and to be as adaptable as possible. And I believe that the budget that we've approved affords me the capability to do that. Anyone want to add anything to that?
Just, Anthony, just to echo what you're saying, that at the budget meeting and in previous discussions, what we talked about was, again, in a way to best serve the whole broader community of Willmet and Kenilworth members as well, to prepare for all eventualities. Obviously, we know that there's a chance that the virus is going to come back in a big way in the fall and winter. But there's also chances that things play out in a different way, and we didn't want to short-change the community by not being, as you said, prepared as best as possible, again, for all possibilities. So I think that's what the budget really is doing, and you've been doing in terms of trying to structure the best kind of a game plan that's flexible. And then, as Trustee Johnson pointed out before, if conditions get such that there's more and more reliance on virtual public education in the school system, then what can the library do to kind of help to augment that? And that might involve some kinds of expenditures that I know we've been discussing that could then make the library more relevant and more in people's homes, even if it is a virtual, but still an expenditure-driven kind of effort.
Another factor is that we have deferred implementation of the conversion of our collection to RFID for a number of years. We have anticipated in the coming year that if there is downtime because of the limitation in hours that is a result of the pandemic, that staff time could be used effectively to complete that conversion. RFID requires handling every item in the collection because it requires placing the required chips in every circulating item. So that's a very labor-intensive activity. That would be an effective use of staff time under these circumstances. So we have already anticipated proceeding with some things that would allow us to catch up to libraries around us that made this conversion at considerably greater expense earlier. And so, you know, we've already planned to take advantage of the availability of staff to focus on some of these sorts of projects, if the opportunity exists, as it may very well, in the coming months.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions about the director's report? Okay, well, that concludes my report, then. Thank you, Lisa.
Hey, thank you. Okay. Trustee Varsis, the ILA update?
Just a couple of interesting things. Some of you may already know this, but Carla Hayden announced today that Colson Whitehead, author of the Pulitzer Prize novels, The Nickel Boys and The Underground Rewrote, will receive the Library of Congress Prize for American Fiction during the 2020 Library of Congress National Book Festival in September. Whitehead is the youngest person at 50 to receive the library's Fiction Award for his lifetime of work. His work is informed by probing insights into the human condition and empathy for those who struggle with life's sometimes harrowing vicissitude. He was selected as this year's winner based on nominations from more than 60 distinguished library literary figures, including former winners of the prize, acclaimed authors, and literary critics from around the world. The prize ceremony will take place online during the National Book Festival. And there was a quote from him that was kind of interesting. "As a kid, I'd walk into great New York City libraries, like the Schaumburg and Mid-Manhattan, on a field trip or for a school assignment, and feel this deep sense of awe, as if I'd stumbled into a sacred pocket in the city," Whitehead said. "I hope that right now, there's a young kid who looks like me, who sees the Library of Congress recognize black artists and feels encouraged to pursue their own vision and find their own sacred spaces of inspiration." We congratulate him as the Willmet library and hope he contributes many more books that we can read. The second thing is that, just a little note about Stacey Abrams, who talks about libraries must tell the story of America. She is the daughter of a librarian, and she really focuses on libraries and what they can do. "We need libraries to help us tell the truth about who we are," she said. "A nation that promises opportunity but has struggled to make that promise well." "To tell the truth effectively," she called on libraries "to change organizational culture. People at the library have to be willing to see and accept everyone who calls on us." She says that librarians should not close themselves off to divisive opinions but should amplify the messages they are unifying. Two of her projects are getting voting rights for as many people as possible and having the census count be real so that people don't get left out when the money is allocated. So it's important to educate the public on the importance of voting and the importance of the census. She thinks a lot of people really don't understand that. And those are the biggest stories.
Talked a little bit about Rails. Do you have anything else to add, Director Austin?
I don't think I have anything else to add. Rails is having their monthly meeting for members is on Thursday. So we'll learn a little bit more about what Rails may do in response to the updated Realm Study that I referenced earlier to see if they're going to make any changes to their proposal regarding how long materials should be quarantined for. Otherwise, I don't think I have anything else to add. If you go to Rails and click on their COVID tab, which is the first tab you'll see on the left-hand side of their page, you can learn more about what Rails is doing to be responsive to the virus right now for system members.
Do you have any comments additionally since we got communication in terms of comments and suggestions that you've received?
I think we've received a lot of very positive feedback from the public. So, I mean, it far outnumbers anything that we've received in terms of complaints about limited services, in terms of not being able to linger in the library or read newspapers or sit in comfy chairs and so on. A lot of folks are just happy to see that the library is back open again, and I think that a lot of that has to do with the library is kind of a symbol of community. And the fact that when the public library reopens, that kind of symbolizes that there's some hope, I think, regarding what's going on in our society right now and that there's still opportunity that's afforded to folks. So I think that we're serving that purpose for a lot of people right now, and they're thrilled to have access to the collections again because I think that's kind of a physical representation of the freedom that they enjoy through the freedom to read and view. That's, I guess, the point that I would make right now is that I think a lot of folks have been telling staff just how happy they are to be able to come back in, browse the collections, get stuff, and feel educated and entertained.
Thank you. And your numbers were incredible with the virtual program, so look forward to seeing those. Okay. As a requirement of the Illinois Public Library Annual Report, the Board's Minute Audit Committee is a part of the review minute of WPL Board of Trustees prior to the August meeting. Trustee Fishman and Trustee Riddle are on the audit committee. And I'm suggesting that you call Marty in the office, and she will get the minutes together and just make an appointment, and you can do it individually. And I'll contact Trustee Riddle. Thank you so much for doing that. Okay. Is there any new business? Just want to confirm the time for our next meeting on August 18th. And there will be a hearing at 5:45. So in case anybody wants to get into the library, they can get into it. And Anthony will be the one that's present in the library in case they have any questions or any comments regarding our VNA. And so the meeting will be at 6:00 and will be via Zoom. And the reason we have it at 6:00 is because in the middle of the day, it's, even though it may be convenient for some of us, that 6:00 o'clock is a compromise so that if you're working, you can attend, but it's not too late if it goes later.
Okay, I would just ask why, if we're not meeting in person? I mean, I was told we moved it to 6:00. I can hear my background noise with kids and dinner. But I guess since we're doing it virtually, it seemed like 7:30 is what we're all accustomed to. And the, for not in person, I guess I just don't understand why we're moving it to 6:00. So it's much more convenient for me, but if that makes more sense for everybody else, then so be it.
I think some of the trustees want it earlier, like in the middle of the day, because sometimes the meetings go longer. Do any of the other trustees want to talk about preferences or their thoughts?
That's fine.
Any other business that someone wants to bring in? We'll note 7:30.
Well, could I add one thing, Lisa?
Yes.
I forgot, I had one more report that I was going to give that was just very interesting from the ILA. And that is, that is a human library where people, instead of traditional books, are on loan to readers. You can walk in, borrow a human being, and talk to them about a challenging issue or whatever else you would like to, that they have expertise in. Just a new idea to throw out. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else?
No, just, Lisa, in terms of the timing of the board meetings, I know you had set up a doodle poll, and at least from what I witnessed, everybody who responded to the doodle poll indicated that sometime between 10:00 and 6:00 p.m. was best. And that certainly is my situation. And it seemed to be the same thing for everybody else who did. I know there were two board members who, for some reason, did not respond to the doodle poll. But for those who did, that was consistent, both for the board members as well as for Director Austin. So that seemed to be very clear and a clear majority that way. And then, secondly, I just want to say, too, that I've had the good fortune of talking to some members of other libraries in the area. And Anthony, everybody has had some small bumps or adjustments because of the flexibility that has to be shown in terms of being virtual and being kind of a remote service kind of centered, and then reopening. And I must say, in sharing stories, Willmet certainly rises to the top in terms of how well things seem to be going, both internally and externally from the community. So I just want to say thank you for that again.
I would agree with that, same experience.
And I think the other thing is, at one point, Director Austin was the only one in the library. And so with some of our meetings, when they were later, he would be leaving quite late after a long day. So that was another consideration. But thank you. Any other business?
Again, you guys just brought a lot of kids in the next Zoom meeting, but that's okay by me, then.
Okay. Do what you got to do.
Right.
Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting at 7:26?
I will sell a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? I'll second. Okay. Trustee Walker's motion to adjourn the meeting at 7:26. Trustee Fishman has seconded it. And there can be a roll call vote on this one. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The meeting's adjourned. Thank you all so much.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
Thank you, Anthony. Thank you, Lisa.